Good evening and welcome. Just looking around, it's not a big crowd. So the first order of business this evening is to elect... Am I too loud? Loud enough? Is this working? We need to elect a moderator for this evening. And we have had Julie Hanam offer once again her services. And what I would like to do this evening is get a motion to nominate Julie Hanam as moderator. And a second, please. All right. With a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Okay? All those opposed? By substantial majority, we are now electing Julie. And I will ask the chairman of the Board of Selectmen to cast one vote in favor, please.
I will pass one vote in favor of Julie Hanam as moderator.
Thank you. Julie, come on up. Do you solemnly swear that you will honestly, faithfully, and impartially perform to the best of your ability the duties for which you have been elected for this evening in accordance with the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the bylaws of the Town of Sheffield to help you, God?
I will.
Thanks. A signature, please. There you go. There's yours. Thank you. Good evening. Appreciate your vote of confidence. We'll see what happens on this annual meeting. If you were able, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. So to begin tonight, we have introductions. Our select board is here tonight. Our chair, Bob Kilmer, Nadine Haver, and Renee Wood; town administrator, Rhonda La Bombard; and legal counsel, Mark Rich, here at the head table; our finance committee, who weighed in on many of these budgets, Colin Smith, Dave Macy, Ken Smith, Nadine Haver, and yours truly. I want to thank Felicity and her assistant, Nicole Parker, and all of the support staff for getting us organized for this evening. All right. Thank you. A couple of housekeeping. We have 32 warrant items. Couple of us have little wagers going on how long we'll be here tonight. We'll try to keep things moving. We will be using clickers. We'll have a little demo in a moment. A majority vote's required to pass most of these articles, except for the two bylaw articles at the end. If there are any amendments, please submit them in writing for both the moderator, myself, and for the town clerk's minutes. We do need those. When we're voting, please stay seated. Especially if we have to do a hand count. We really need people to be seated at that point. No clapping after any motions unless we determine it to be absolutely unanimous, which usually is not the case. So I would like us to have that decorum. And if you wish to speak, please approach the microphone. I'll do my best... Oh, I've got to grab my phone. ...to do the three-minute time limit. If you need to speak a second time, then hopefully you'll be sharing new information only. And at the microphone, again, you need to have your name, your street address, have your clicker or your card so that I'm sure that you are a voter and that Felicity taking minutes and others know that we have registered voters speaking. At this point, I want to turn to Nicole. We're using that Echo 360 clicker one more time. So we have a test question. Nicole, I'm not seeing the little timer thing. Okay. One of the suggestions that was made not long ago was that we have a timer. And we do have a 20-second timer on this. So as we've done in the past, if you press the button, one, it's a yes. If it's a two, it's a no. You can change your mind within the 20 seconds. Once we get ready to go, you should be seeing that timer countdown. So we'll go from there. So, Nicole, are we ready? Okay. So here's the question. Have you finished your spring cleanup? Hit yes or no? I'm not seeing the timer, though. It'll be on the next slide? Okay, sorry. I'm not timing. Are we done? Okay. So we'll call that complete. There's the timer. All right. So for the other motions, the timer should come up while we're doing that voting. Hopefully, that's just a little glitch we've got there. Okay. I think that's it for housekeeping. So at this point, we'll get started with Article 1. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds such sums of money as listed below as written in the warrant.
I make a motion, Ms. Moderator. I move to raise and appropriate $4,498,288 for the purpose of funding those budgets listed in the warrant necessary to defray the expenses of the town for fiscal year 2025.
Motion has been made and seconded for $4,498,288. I want to take a moment because there are a lot of budgets, a lot of different categories and line items. Does anyone have any questions or have any discussion that they need for any of the individual items? Okay. Hearing none, then we will vote. Nicole? Okay. Please vote. And now you see your timer. And the moderator declares almost unanimous, 89 to 1... That's a seven. Oh, 89 to 7. And the motion is carried. Article 2. I ask Ken from the Finance Committee. I will read. To see if the town will vote to fix the compensation of the following elected officers of the town for fiscal year 25 as required by Chapter 41, Section 108, Chapter 71, Section 52 of the General Laws. Moderator: $300. Selectman Chair: $3,210. Two members of the select board at $2,675 each. Southern Berkshire Regional School District Committee, four members, at $500 each, or take any other action relative thereto.
Ken Smith, 465 Silver Street, a member of the Finance Committee. I move to fix the compensation of the following elected officers of the town for fiscal year 2025 as required by Chapter 41, Section 108, and Chapter 71, Section 52 of the General Laws. Moderator: $300. Selectman Chair: $3,210. Selectmen, two members, at $2,675 each. Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee, four members, at $500 each.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please vote. The motion is carried, 101 to 3. Article 3. To see if the town will vote to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District operating and transportation budget for fiscal year 2025 and vote to raise and appropriate $7,894,867 to pay the town's assessed share of that budget or take any other action relative thereto.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District operating and transportation budget for fiscal year 2025 and to vote to raise and appropriate $7,894,867 for the town's assessed share of that budget.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please vote. The motion is carried, 93 to 9. Article 4. To see if the town will vote to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District roof and boiler debt for fiscal year 2025 and to vote to raise and appropriate $171,032 to pay the town's assessed share of that debt or take any other action relative thereto.
Ms. Moderator, I move to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District roof and boiler debt for fiscal year 2025 and to vote to raise and appropriate $171,032 to pay the town's assessed share of that budget.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please vote. The motion is carried, 101 to 3. Article 5. To see if the town will vote to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District capital budget for fiscal year 2025 and vote to raise and appropriate $175,282 to pay the town's assessed share of that budget or take any other action relative thereto.
Ms. Moderator, I move to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District capital budget for fiscal year 2025 and to vote to raise and appropriate $175,282 to pay for the town's assessed share of that budget.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. The vote is carried, 100 to 5. Article 6. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $55,000 to pay for vocational education tuition in fiscal year 2025 or take any other action relative thereto.
Madam Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate $55,000 to pay for vocational education tuition in fiscal year 2025.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballot. Cast your vote. The motion is carried, 104 to 1. Article 7. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds $196,750 for the disposal and management of solid waste and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any action to effectuate the purpose of the article, including but not limited to entering into agreements in excess of three years for such solid waste disposal and management or take any other action relative thereto.
I move to raise from solid waste disposal enterprise fund revenues $184,750 and transfer $12,000 from the solid waste enterprise fund for the disposal and management of solid waste and to authorize the select board to take any action to effectuate the purpose of this article, including but not limited to entering into agreements in excess of three years for such solid waste disposal and management.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. The motion is carried, 100 to 3. Article 8. To see if the town will vote to accept funds being provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Chapter 90 of the General Laws to pay for such costs as allowed by appropriate legislation in connection with the maintenance, repair, and construction of town ways and bridges or take any other action relative thereto.
I move to accept funds being provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Chapter 90 of the General Laws to pay for such costs as allowed by appropriated legislation in connection with the maintenance, repair, and construction of town ways and bridges.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballot. The motion is unanimous, 108 to 0. Yay, first one. Article 9. To see if the town will vote to authorize the appointment of members of the Board of Selectmen to any office or position under its supervision at no additional compensation in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 268A, Section 21A of the General Laws or take any other action relative thereto.
Madam Moderator, I move to authorize the appointment of members of the Board of Selectmen to any office or position under its supervision at no additional compensation in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 268A, Section 21A of the General Laws.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion or question? Hearing none, please vote. The motion is carried in the affirmative, 98 to 8. Article 10. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Health to employ any of its members as Title V and perk test witnesses for septic system inspections and sanitation inspections under its supervision in accordance with General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 21A for fiscal year 2025, and to set the salary for those positions at $60 per Title V inspections and $125 per perk tests in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter 41, Section 4A, or take any other action relative thereto.
I move to authorize the Board of Health to employ any of its members as Title V and perk test witnesses for septic system inspections and sanitation inspections under its supervision in accordance with General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 21A for the fiscal year 2025, and to set the salary for those positions at $60 per Title V inspections and $125 per perk tests in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter 41, Section 4A.
The motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, please vote. The motion is carried in the affirmative, 97 to 6. Article 11. To see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer-collector to sell, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, any parcel or parcels of real estate which have been or may be acquired through the foreclosure of tax title or take any other action relative thereto.
I move to authorize the treasurer-collector to sell, with the approval of the select board, any parcel or parcels of real estate which have been or may be acquired through the foreclosure of tax title.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Vote in the affirmative, 99 to 5. Article 12. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $77,000 to provide for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures under the provisions of Chapter 40, Section 6 of the General Laws, known as the Reserve Fund, or take any other action relative thereto.
Ms. Moderator, I move to transfer $77,000 from free cash to provide for extraordinary and unforeseen expenditures under the provisions of Chapter 40, Section 6 of the General Laws, known as the Reserve Fund.
A motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Vote is in the affirmative, 102 to 5. Article 13. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $750 to the Emergency Response Fund or take any other action relative thereto.
I move to transfer $750 from free cash for the Emergency Response Fund.
The motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Vote in the affirmative, 105 to 2. Article 14. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $10,000 to compensate firefighters for training or take any other action relative thereto.
Ms. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate $10,000 to compensate firefighters for training.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Who knew 20 seconds could be this long, right? Feels long tonight. The vote is in the affirmative, 105 to 1. Article 15. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $20,000 for financial services, including but not limited to audits or take any other action relative thereto.
Ms. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate $20,000 for financial services as written in the warrant.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. The vote is in the affirmative, 103 to 2. Article 16. To see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, as most recently amended, to establish fiscal year 25 spending limits for the revolving funds as written in the warrant. So turn your page. The numbers are there.
I move to establish FY '25 revolving fund spending limits as written in the warrant.
The motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. The vote is in the affirmative, 101 to 4. Article 17. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $239,190 to purchase and equip two trucks for the Highway Department, including any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action relative thereto.
I move to transfer $239,190 from free cash for the purchase and equipping of two highway trucks as written in the warrant.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. The vote is in the affirmative, 92 to 11. Article 18. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $25,000 from the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund for recycling programs, repairs at the transfer station, including any incidental and related costs and expenses or take any other action relative thereto.
Ms. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $25,000 from the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund for recycling programs, repairs at the transfer station as written in the warrant.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. The vote is in the affirmative, 104 to 3. Article 19. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $5,000 for repairs to available funds $5,000 for repairs to town-owned cemeteries, including any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action relative thereto.
I move to transfer $5,000 from free cash for town-owned cemetery repairs as written in the warrant.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please vote. The vote is in the affirmative, 105 to 1. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $106,973 for the fourth-year payment of a fire truck lease purchase financing agreement, or take any other action relative thereto.
Madam Moderator, I move to transfer $106,973 from free cash for the fifth-year payment of the fire truck lease purchase financing agreement.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please vote. The vote is in the affirmative, 101 to 5. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $100,000 to the Fire Truck Stabilization Fund, or take any other action relative thereto.
Ms. Moderator, I move to transfer $100,000 from free cash into the Fire Truck Stabilization Fund.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Please vote. I'm sorry? Okay, hold on. Technicalities here. Ooh. Hang on. We'll be okay. We're getting a preview of all the others. Yet to come. Okay, we will use this slide to show the timing. It will not be an amendment. This is for Article 21, about $100,000 for the Fire Truck Stabilization Fund. The motion has been made and seconded. We will just simply take the vote numbers off of this slide. Thank you, Nicole. Was there any other discussion? Just checking. We started... Okay, please vote. This has been approved, 102 to 4. Okay, we're gonna take a moment while Nicole resets so we can get to Article 22. We can pretend we're at the sixth inning stretch or something. Seventh inning stretch. Okay, well, that's... Okay. Guess what? Now you know how much I actually watch baseball. Well, it's somewhere in there. Six, seven, you know. All right, back to Article 22. Thank you, Nicole. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $125,000 for town-building repairs, improvements, equipping, and furnishings to include but not be limited to the Town Hall, Library, Senior Center, and Police Station, including any design and engineering costs and any other costs or expenses incidental and related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto.
I move to transfer $125,000 from free cash for town-building repairs as written in the warrant.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please vote. I see it's only on two seconds, Nicole. Oh, dear. Oh, the clickers are not working? Oh. Uh-oh. All right, timeout again. Now it'll be a seventh inning stretch. We'll do it right. I think we're resetting. We have to reboot. Think we're ready? Okay, so please vote. Article 22. Now we're going. Yay, thank you, Nicole. And the vote is in the affirmative, 102 to 3. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $25,000 to purchase information, technology, hardware, software, and services, including any incidental or related costs and expenses, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any action to effectuate the purpose of the article, including but not limited to entering into agreements in excess of three years, or take any other action relative thereto.
I move to transfer $25,000 from free cash for the purchase of technology, information, hardware, software, and services as written in the warrant.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please vote. The motion is in the affirmative, 107 to 2. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $85,000 to purchase and equip truck hoses for the Fire Department, including any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action relative thereto.
Ms. Moderator, I move to transfer $85,000 from free cash for the purchase of truck hoses for the Fire Department as written in the warrant.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please vote. The vote is in the affirmative, 105 to 3. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $12,000 to purchase voter clickers and related equipment for town meeting, including any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action relative thereto.
I move to transfer $12,000 from free cash for the purchase of voter clickers as written in the warrant.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please vote. And the vote is in the affirmative, 93 to 13. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $30,000 for a tree management program, including any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action relative thereto.
Ms. Moderator, I move to transfer $30,000 from free cash for the purpose of a tree management program as written in the warrant.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Pat Levine, 261 East Main Street. Question, what is a tree management program?
So this is gonna be to begin a program to try and manage the trees along the roadsides. One of our most common calls that we get are dead trees that are gonna fall on the wires or trees that are hanging on the wires. So this program would be an attempt to identify those trees before they become a problem and to get them removed or taken care of.
Is there any other questions?
Of course.
Yes.
Tom, meet your solid Bealey Road. Oh, that's so much better. I want to speak in support of the fact that there's actually dedicated monies for the management of trees. As with so many other things in the world, unfortunately, the word "manage" often means "kill" or "eliminate" when we talk about managing pests, for example. I would like to suggest and hope that this intention is that we be very proactive about protecting those trees well before they get to the point where they're hazards. I know that $30,000 is a drop in the bucket just to take care of those hazardous trees. I understand that, but I'm very glad that trees have a line. Thanks.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say one thing. Thanks, Tom, for bringing that up. There is plans to look at them and the possibility of replacing some of the trees that have been removed, but maybe a little bit back from the wires so that in the future they won't become a problem. But that is in the plan as well.
Any other discussion or questions? Then please vote. The vote is in the affirmative, 99 to 7. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $200,000 to replace the Village Green sidewalks, including design and engineering costs and any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action relative thereto.
Ms. Moderator, I move to transfer $200,000 from free cash to replace the Village Green sidewalks as written in the warrant.
The motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
Hi, I'm Laura Grunfeld. I live on Bealey Road. And I just want to say that it would be really great if people with disabilities were consulted in the design process, because there's a whole lot of accessibility issues about that whole project.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any other discussion on the article?
James Kelly, 1899 County Road. Does this also include maintenance of those once they're installed?
So we have to get easements from all of the owners along the Village Green. It would be my intention that in those easements that we discuss the maintenance and who's responsible for what, so that finally we have a clear decision on that once and for all, so.
So that's a process that's unfolding?
It is a process, yes.
Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. Please vote. Article 27. The motion carries in the affirmative, 87 to 17. Article 28, to see if the town will vote in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 77 of the Acts of 2023, to rescind the vote taken under Article 29 of the May 1, 2023 Annual Town Meeting, creating a special opioid settlement stabilization fund and dedicating 100% of the opioid litigation settlement funds received by the town to such fund pursuant to General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5b, and further to transfer the sum of $6,350.11 from the Special Opioid Settlement Stabilization Fund to a special revenue fund approved by the Director of Accounts pursuant to said Chapter 77, and for such funds henceforth received to be placed in such special revenue fund, to be expended without further appropriation for all of the purposes allowed by law, including those outlined in applicable opioid litigation settlement documents, or take any other action relative thereto.
I move to... I move in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 77, the Acts of 2023, as written in the warrant.
That's cheating. I'm sorry. Is there a second? The motion's been made and seconded. Is there discussion, or perhaps someone would like to explain a little bit about this, please?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, through you. This is essentially, believe it or not, just an accounting mechanism. If you recall, previously, Town Meeting established a special opioid stabilization fund - excuse me - into which settlement monies would be deposited. And the reason that that fund was created was because - excuse me - at the time, there was no statutory mechanism to allow the town to receive those monies and then essentially expend them for specified purposes because expenditure of funds that are received by the town have to be approved by Town Meeting, but these funds are earmarked for specific purposes. So there was essentially a gap in the law. And then, Chapter 77 of the Acts of 2023 was adopted to address that gap in the law, meaning that we no longer needed the special stabilization fund, and instead, these monies could go directly into a special revenue fund. They could only be expended for very specific purposes, which are outlined in the opioid litigation settlement documents as negotiated by the Attorney General. So again, essentially, an accounting mechanism, because otherwise, you have to come back and vote to appropriate the funds for the very purposes that this now allows the funds to be expended without having to come back to Town Meeting. It's just a fairly straightforward process. These are limited-purpose funds. Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion has been seconded. Are there questions? Discussion? Are there questions? Discussion?
Bonnie Silver's, 15 Bow Wow Road. Does this relate at all, or mirror at all, what happened in Cree Barrington with their pot shops and the suits there? And have we taken action to avoid that problem?
This has nothing to do with the marijuana revenue funds. These are settlement funds from the opioid drug companies that came directly into the town.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Article 28. Article 29, to see if the town will vote to reduce the number of members on the Conservation Commission from five members to three members in accordance with the provisions of general law, Chapter 40, Section 8C, or take any other action relative thereto.
Ms. Moderator, I move to reduce the number of members on the Conservation Commission from five members to three members in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8C.
The motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Pat Levine, 261 East Main Street. What's the logic behind this movement? I don't agree with it, and think that we need as much participation in our town committees as we can get. I realize filling them sometimes is difficult, but what's the thinking here?
I agree with you that we need the participation. For the last year, the Conservation Commission has been operating down one member. We have had no one step up to serve in that capacity. If this passes, it would be a three-member board with two alternate members.
Barry Kreisberg, 322 Bow Wow Road. I commend the Conservation Commission for their work, first of all, and secondly, I don't think that we should adopt a reduction in the number of serving members, even though I understand the background behind it, that it's difficult to find people to participate. But I don't think we ought to codify that. I think we ought to keep it as robust as possible, with as many potential seats as possible. But the work is invaluable, and protecting the wetlands, which is what their charge is, is also invaluable, and I'm against this. Thank you.
I agree with you that the work that the Conservation Commission does is invaluable. I joined the board, the Conservation Commission, a little over two years ago, because there were not enough members to make a quorum, which we all know means no business can be conducted. Like some of the other boards, the Conservation Commission has a time limit on which to take action on items that are submitted to it, and without a quorum, no action can be taken. Right now, Rhonda is absolutely correct that we have been short a member, so we've been operating with four members. We have at least two members of those four who take regularly scheduled vacations. So at that point, we're down to three members, and we have one alternate. Thank you, Don Ward, for all your many years of service. If Don was not able to sit in, we would have these important decisions being made by three members. As someone who has served on this Conservation Commission for the last several years, and currently is its chair, I do not take this motion lightly, but I have recommended it, and I will vote for it, because we can talk about the need for service, but the bottom line is, this is extremely tough, I think, after serving on many boards, the most rigorous, demanding board commission in the town. And without people stepping up, why should we have a higher number than makes sense? And I would ask each of you to challenge yourself. If you're not going to step up, then I would urge you to vote for this motion.
Kathy Orlando, Hewin Street. And hearing what Renee said, and what everybody else said, I'm hoping that this will encourage other people to step forward, because the challenge, when you have a three-member board, is that because of the open meeting laws, that means that two of those members cannot speak outside of the meeting. So you can't even have a conversation of, hey, did I understand this correctly? So I would find this to be problematic, to have only a three-member board, but recognizing everything, the reality of what has been said, really encourage people to step up and do this. I have also served on the Conservation Commission. Well, it is very rigorous, it is very rewarding, and there's a lot of great training. So if you know anybody who might be interested, I would really urge you to, you know, suggest people to do that. And I would recommend not voting yes on this, because it does create a real problem with the possibility of unintentional open meeting law violations, because we're a tiny town, and it's very difficult to not have conversations of things outside of meetings.
Renee wishes to speak.
I would also like to let people know that I do not intend to put in for another term on the Conservation Commission. I am going to ask the Select Board to appoint me as an alternate, which is a one-year term. We have two alternate positions, only one of them is currently filled. I also, in all of my years of serving on boards, which goes back to 2009, I really haven't had too much of a need to discuss issues outside of a meeting. I do not see this as being a problem for the Conservation Commission, because we have had very good administrative support, and all materials are made ahead of time to the board for them to read, and we do have a conservation consultant, David Kane, who on matters of more than just kind of normal day-to-day matters, is there to advise us and give his opinion. So again, I do not see this reducing the board as being an issue that we should shy away from.
Other discussion? This motion is defeated. 51 yes, 53 no. Thank you for your vote. Article 30, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 4.2.1 Table of Dimensional Regulations of the Sheffield zoning bylaws as printed in the warrant. And this is extension with the Table of Dimensions, and I'm expecting to hear from the Planning Board on this.
At the request of the Select Board, we had a public hearing on this article, and...
George, before you get into discussion, we need a motion. Are you prepared to make a motion on this, so we can have a motion and a second, and then we'll do discussion?
I move that Article 30 be put in on the floor.
Okay, thank you.
This article was, came up because of the request of the Select Board needing to change the distances from the property lines. So it was changed to, basically, in the minimum footage from the front down to 40 feet, and the sidelines go to 20 feet, basically across the board.
Any discussion or other questions of the Planning Board on this? Renee?
I would really urge people to support this. If you look at the Table of Dimension Regulations that's in your warrant, you'll notice kind of that the general business district at 100 feet on the minimum front setback, and 75 feet on the minimum rearing side is really out of whack with the rest of the districts and their setback requirements. I was told years ago by the members, including Doc Norris and John Downey, who worked on this, that the general business district was a little bit of a compromise, and that this is where these larger setbacks, the minimum frontage is not being requested to be changed. One of the other things that this would affect greatly, if you decide to support this, is our highway garage that you just voted to purchase at 48 Business Park, Sheffield Business Park. Out of that four-acre lot, about an acre and a half is devoted to setbacks, as they currently are. This would make the setbacks in line with the other districts, and give people a lot more use of the land that currently is classified as being in the general business district. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions on Article 30? Hearing none, please vote. And I need to note that this is a two-thirds vote to pass as a bylaw. Sorry, I didn't state that quicker. And it passes in the affirmative, 90 to 14. Thank you. Article 31, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 3.0 Use Regulations and Section 10.0 Definitions of the Sheffield zoning bylaws as printed in the warrant. This is regarding accessory-use dwellings. And again, I will defer for a motion from the Planning Board.
I move, George Olain, Planning Board Chair. I move that Article 31 be allowed to be voted on.
The motion is made and seconded. George, do you have a little bit of an overview on this for us?
Basically, what this does, it allows you to take, if you have an existing attached garage, or other type building attached to your existing home, to make it into an auxiliary dwelling unit, and also allows you, subject to all the other regulations in town, border health, et cetera, to allow you to put in one additional ADU. Planning Board did hold a public hearing on it, and approved this article as amended.
Very good. Are there questions on the article as printed?
Julia, I would like to comment.
Comment from the meeting.
The Planning Board did a great deal of work to try to provide the opportunity for additional housing units in our community. That's what ADU stands for, auxiliary dwelling. And they spent a tremendous amount of time and energy. I was able to sit in on many of those meetings, and I highly support this article.
Thank you very much. Renee has a comment?
We all have talked about the need for more housing in this town, and how our young people leave, and how young people don't come in, and what, where do seniors go when they can no longer either wish or afford to stay in their home. Over the last year plus, the Planning Board has been working very diligently on expanding the number of housing options that are available. And this is the most significant one that they are bringing forward this year. It's, you know, like an Ohana unit, a mother-in-law unit, except that it is solely contained. It is outside of the home. The Planning Board already has that on the books for inside a home. So this is one of the many tools that the town has been trying to put into the housing repertoire, and I commend the Planning Board greatly for the work that they have done on this, and hope that you will support it. It does require a two-thirds vote affirmative.
Will Conklin, Galvin Farm Trail. I just, for my own clarification, I was wondering if Planning Board or somebody could explain the difference between the, well, it explains the difference between detached accessory dwelling and the accessory dwelling, but it seems like the detached accessory dwelling unit must be contained within something like a garage, or something of that sort. And I could just be reading that wrong, but I'm just wanting to see where in this would allow for just a separate, independent ADU, as opposed to one that's not within, that is within an existing accessory structure, as stated in Number 5.
The attached ADUs, obviously, it's attached to, some places have garages that are not attached to the house, so, or you have an outbuilding, a barn, that could be converted into a dwelling unit. This allows for that, subject to your septic system and well capabilities.
Okay. Oops, pardon me. Rachel Cunningham from 371 Brookshire School Road. I'm just wondering, are these for permanent residents, or for short-term rentals? Thank you.
Rachel, I just wanted to double-check. You had your clicker in your hand, right? I'm trying to be cognizant. Thank you. Perfect.
The state says short-term rentals is like 30 days, so hopefully, you would have the people in there longer than that to make it a viable option.
Madam Moderator? Madam Moderator? Yes, I'm sorry.
Just to point out, you'll see this on page 6 of your warrant, under Section 3.2.9.52, an ADU shall not be utilized as a short-term rental per the definition of short-term rental and occupancy of a short-term rental under Mass. General Law, Chapter 64G, Section 1. So that's specifically not allowed.
Thank you for that clarification. Other questions? Yes?
Brittany Ebling, 87 Maple Ave. I think that clarified what I was going to say, but I wanted to emphasize that on the Planning Board, as part of our discussions, it was very important to us that that language be included, and that it specifically be written in such a way that would support long-term occupancy for Sheffield residents and those who'd like to live here.
Thank you. Other comments?
I would just like to congratulate the Planning Board. I think they put a lot of work into this. It was well thought out and well-written, and I think it will be a great help for Sheffield as far as housing goes.
Other discussion? Questions? All right, then please vote on Article 31, and this does require a two-thirds vote. And it passes in the affirmative, 100 to 6. Thank you. All right. All right, one more article. Flip a couple pages here. Thank you to the planning board, too, for all that hard work. There's a lot here, and I know they worked so diligently, as our select board noted, but thank you very much. Article thirty-two, to see if the town will accept Sections three to seven inclusive of Chapter forty-four B of the General Laws, otherwise known as the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act, known as the ACT, by approving a surcharge on real property for the purposes permitted by said act, including the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space, the acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic resources, the acquisition, creation, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of land for recreational use, the acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of community housing, and the rehabilitation and restoration of such open space and community housing that is acquired or created as provided under said act, that the amount of such surcharge on real property shall be one percent of the annual real estate tax levy against real property commencing in fiscal year 2026, that is not the current year, that's another year, and that the town hereby accepts the following exemptions from such surcharge permitted under Section 3E of said act. Number one, property owned and occupied as a domicile by any person who qualifies for low-income housing or low or moderate-income senior housing in the town as defined in Section Two of said act. Number two, one hundred thousand dollars of the value of each taxable parcel of residential real property. Number three, a hundred thousand dollars of the value of each taxable parcel of Class Three, commercial property, and Class Four, industrial property, as defined in Section Two A of said Chapter fifty-nine, or take any other action relative thereto. Madam Moderator, I move to approve this article as written in the warrant. The motion has been made and seconded. I would like to just let you as a community know that we're not approving this act tonight. An affirmative vote just allows this to be put on the ballot so that the voters vote on a written ballot. Which would be November, right? If it passes tonight? Correct, November. The November ballot. Any other questions, discussion? Selectman Kilmer, Bob?
I'd like to say I'm not in favor of this proposal. I don't believe it's a good time for a new tax. I don't believe it's a good thing for people of low means to have to go to our assessor and be exempt from having to pay this tax. I do believe in open space is great and historical preservation and outdoor recreation, affordable housing, but that should come more through nonprofits and donations from people with means. I don't believe it should be a tax. Taxes should be meant for needs, not wants. For me, this is not a necessity and not something that should be taxed.
Kathy Orlando, Hewin Street. This, as Renee said, I mean, I guess as Nadine said, this is going to put this on the ballot for November. It is a tool that over a hundred and ninety communities in the Commonwealth have adopted. And it's something that we think Sheffield residents should be able to vote on. Most of the communities tend to use the vast majority of the money for housing. Sheffield is desperately in need of this. When we did the Housing Production Plan, which Nadine chaired, this was one of the recommendations that came out of that. You know, a lot of, when we just had, we heard from Stockbridge and Beckett that what they're using their money for, the vast majority, and the reason that they did this, again, was housing. They've also been using it for municipal buildings, for churches, you know, the steeple in Ashley Falls, their church, you know, they're trying to raise money to do that, whether it's, you know, you can't do it for religious things, but you can do it for historic structures. So this is a, this is a tool that the residents of Sheffield should be able to vote on whether or not they want to do it. This gives the opportunity to do that in November. There will be a lot of time between now and November to be able to learn more about it, to be able to understand, they will ask questions, but without town meeting saying, yes, you can put it on the ballot, residents don't have the opportunity to vote. So I would urge everybody to allow this to go on the ballot so that people can learn more and then vote in November.
I'm not, I'm not sure which of you were there. Pat, go ahead.
Pat Levine, two sixty-one East Main Street. The one thing that hasn't been mentioned about this is that if eventually it is approved on the November ballot, the state matches the money that we put in, and we're missing that money if we don't approve this eventually. I think it's extremely important that the resident citizens of this community have the option to vote for or against it. All we're doing tonight is authorizing that it go on the ballot for that option to be exercised by the full resident citizens of this community.
Okay. Will?
Will Conklin, Galvin Farm Trail. I just wanted to share my own experience with these monies from other communities in my work with young people and most specifically with youth jobs and workforce development, that these monies in communities that have adopted it, use this money to create youth jobs in our communities and also to use this money to leverage those very funds like nonprofits and other funds to put the whole package together to create what, to my mind, are desperate needs, housing and viable communities.
Thank you. Bob?
Just to, correction. This is not a guaranteed matching grant from the state. The state does allocate money towards it if it has it. It's not a promise, it's not a guarantee.
Ben Webb, eighty-seven Maple Ave. To me, it's kind of a no-brainer because the money that is available, that the state allocates funds to every year, is available to everyone and we're all paying into that through our taxes and we only have access to it if we make this happen. And also, as far as housing, we don't have any money as a town to act specifically on housing projects, and this would be a huge leverage for us to be able to make some of these ideas a reality without putting the burden on our own tax base beyond this. Thanks.
Thank you. David?
David Poddle, twenty-nine Laurel Lane. I'm the current superintendent of the Sheffield Cemetery Association. The Sheffield Cemetery, which is on, right up from Laurel Lane, right on Berkshire School Road, is actually a private cemetery. And I see many of you who attended the ceremony that we had this past Monday for the William Jones Reinstallation of the Civil War Stone. The cost of that stone luckily was provided through insurance funds for the individual who happened to disrupt or break the stone that had to be replaced along with the fencing and so on. And luckily, insurance took care of that. And let me tell you that it was substantial. The funds that we get as a private cemetery in order to do some of the restoration that's necessary for the stones to tip over and so on is very difficult to get. It comes through the sale of graves and for burials, cremations, and so on, and we get a small percentage of that. And the majority of it goes to the individual that's involved in grave digging and so on. By saying yes to this and hopefully having it come up at the town meeting and an affirmative vote there, the town will be able to gain resources from the state as well as provide money by the taxpayers in Sheffield. And I'm not sure the exact amount that's derived by the state, that what the state will give us, I think it's somewhere around a third. If you look at Great Barrington, they're at three percent right now. And just as an example, the historical society there derives somewhere around seventy-seven thousand-plus dollars. So, you know, I would like to be able to access the superintendent of the cemetery some money to do some restoration. And the availability of funds through grants and so on is very limited. This would give us an opportunity to be able to do some replacements. So I'm suggesting that we vote yes and then have some publicity and see what takes, what takes place in the fall with regard to national elections. So I highly recommend that we, as a group, tonight say yes to this. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry.
Sari Hoy, Main Street. I would like to reiterate a couple of things. One, that this money will, could, is not, one percent is a small amount, but what we can do tonight by voting yes for this is just give us a lot more time for everybody to learn more about what this is all about and how that would affect you individually. We had one communal meeting prior to town meeting, and I think a lot of people learned a lot about what can be done and how it can leverage money elsewhere. And while Bob is correct that it's not guaranteed to be matched, there is no reason for us that the money that is raised from our town can be put into account and held for a number of years until it's accrued and until the amount that the government is, the state is willing to match increases. So there's no, you're not forced to spend it. So let's vote yes so that you all have time to find out more. There will be public meetings where you can find out more. Thank you.
More questions? Yes, Renee?
Thank you all for your comments tonight. I have worked for many years on this, and I do thank this select board for finally allowing it to come to you, the voters. You have a chance tonight to allow it to be put on the November ballot where it will either be voted up or down by a much larger proportion of our town voters than are here tonight. The way this has been structured, it is at the lowest allowable amount, one percent. That would raise, according to figures from the nonprofit organization that supports all the towns who are trying to adopt this, and there are twenty-seven of us this round, would raise about seventy-eight thousand dollars a year. That's after the senior exemption, that's after the low-income exemption, that's after the hundred thousand dollars for basically any piece of property. Now, I want to kind of make a few corrections. The money for the CPA comes from two sources. One, there is a mandatory tax every time a property sale is made and registered at the Southern Berkshire Registry of Deeds. There has also been a lien assessment put on certain transactions. So that's mandatory, that's been mandatory since two thousand. We have been, as a whole, as a town, been into this fund since two thousand dollars and have gotten zero out of it because we haven't voted on it. The second thing is that the legislature in many years has voted additional funds to this. This last budget cycle, they did not. So unless real estate stops selling across the entire state, there will be money for a match. Is there any guarantee of what the percentage of that match is going to be? No. But there will be a match. I have to comment on what my colleague Bob said. The second thing is that this has been particularly designed to protect seniors sixty and older. We all know you can have an income that you wish was greater and you can be property-rich and therefore your taxes are affected. So it goes to income. And just on the current numbers, if you're a one-person senior and you occupy your home, you can make seventy-one thousand fifty dollars, and you would be exempt. As Sari said, more numbers will come out if this is voted affirmative tonight. If you happen to be low-income, they are considering that to be one person at fifty-six thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, and let's just take a family of four, eighty-one thousand two hundred dollars. And of course, this is assessed on property tax after all of the senior work-off, after all of the tax exemptions that currently exist, such as the Chapter sixty-one, which are very important for farmers and holders of property that they really don't use, such as tree exemptions and open space, the veterans, the blind. All of those exemptions come off the top before this is one percent surcharge on the property tax due bill, not the property tax in its whole. Okay? This also, we voted tonight to allocate a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for town building repairs. Hmm, I wonder where that money might come from if this were to pass. We spent last year two hundred and fifty thousand approximately of your tax dollars to repair the Sheffield Police Station roof. Everything, you know, we talked about needs and wants. We have plenty of needs for this money. And every need or want that would come forward has to be explicitly approved by town voters at a meeting like this. So it's not a group of people on a committee spending your money without your approval. It has to be approved by you. Now, I have spent, and in fact, this is my last town meeting of my current six-year term, so I want to thank you for the privilege and honor and the fun of serving you as a select board for these last six years and a total of twelve years. So thank you very much. Since when I first ran for office, whenever it was, fifteen years ago, I wanted to create money. I wanted to create ways of revenue streams besides property taxes. And I think we've done that a couple of ways, all of us supporting each other. I think it's well-known, I brought in money for grants, some of them for needs and some of them for wants. But you and I also, in twenty twenty, put in place the six percent meals tax and the three-quarter, excuse me, the six percent room tax and the three-quarters percent meals tax. And since that time, that has raised right around five hundred thousand dollars. Money adds up. This is the only avenue that I know of creating a revenue stream where we exclude our most vulnerable residents, ask for a small contribution, receive some money back from the state, and build it up for you at a later date to decide how you're going to spend it amongst the four options that, or five options, whatever it is, that are written in the warrant. So I really urge you to give the town voters, as a whole, a chance to say yes or no. And that's what you would be voting affirmatively to do tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion or questions on Article thirty-two? All right, this article requires a majority to pass, and with no other discussion, I This vote is in the affirmative, eighty-seven to nineteen. Again, I'd asked, I know there are many that are very pleased about that, it is not unanimous, however. Our voting's concluded, however, before we do go, Renee had alluded to her last term, her last town meeting as a select board member. I wish to... I wish to thank her for her service in her first time around. We served together for a number of years, and I know no one who works harder. She is very dedicated to town service. Let's give her a round of applause. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for serving you. And I've got a lot of other plans that we'll have a chance to work on, so thank you for your kindness and acknowledgement.
Very good. I will entertain a motion to dissolve this meeting?
Not...
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet, sorry. Hold on, folks, we're almost on, hold on.
I just really would like to tell Renee how much it's been a pleasure and a learning experience to work with her over the last four years, and I wish her well, and maybe she'll come back again, so.
Thank you, Bob. So now I'll entertain a motion to dissolve the meeting. Motion's made and seconded. I declare the meeting dissolved, and we are adjourned. Thank you, good evening.